I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono.
Here.
Is Obi here? Obi Awkafour? Thank you. Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Holmes. Mrs. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
Mrs. Vasquez. Mr. Sabrana.
Present.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Here. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violin Board of Education has called notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time, place, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the President of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, the Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. The Violin Board of Education provides an opportunity for public comment in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Speakers are reminded that the purpose of public comment is to address issues of public concern, personal, defamatory, or discourteous statements about district staff, students, or members of the public are prohibited. The Board reserves the right to curtail remarks that violate these standards. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
Mr. Musterell, I would like to note that Mr. Holmes arrived.
5:01, I have it, thank you.
Mr. Musterell, is there a resolution for executive session?
There is not.
Mr. Yana, do we have any special presentations this evening?
Yes, we do. I would like to invite Vineland High School, our select choir, to perform a holiday medley under the direction of Ms. LaRue.
Hi, we are the Violin High School Choir, and today we'll be singing Joy in the Morning, Sweet Silent Night, and This Snow. Thank you.
Bidding you joy.
We are bidding you joy.
Bidding you joy.
We are bidding you joy.
Bidding you joy on Christmas morning.
Bidding you joy.
We are bidding you joy.
Bidding you joy.
We are bidding you joy.
Joy shall be yours on Christmas morning.
And the snow comes down.
And the snow comes down.
Floating to the ground.
Floating to the ground.
And without a sound.
And without a sound.
The world turns white.
Silent night.
Holy night.
On the white winter's snow,
heavenly stars cast their glow.
Sparkling jewels twinkling bright
on this sweet silent night.
On this sweet silent night.
And the snow comes down.
And the snow comes down.
Floating to the ground.
Floating to the ground.
And without a sound.
And without a sound.
The world turns white.
Hearts take hold, dreams take flight
on this sweet silent night.
On this sweet silent night.
The snow.
Pieces from leaden seats.
The snow.
It powders all the wood.
The snow.
It fills with alabaster.
The wrinkles of the robes.
The snow.
It makes an even face.
The snow.
A mountain and a plain.
The snow.
Unbroken forehead from the east until the east again.
Blow, blow, blow.
The snow.
Blow, blow, blow.
The snow.
The snow.
It reaches to the fences.
The snow.
It wraps it rail by rail.
The snow.
Till it is lost in fleeces. It deals a crystal veil.
The snow.
On stomp and stacking stems.
The snow.
The summer's empty rooms.
The snow.
Acres of seeds of harvest were recorded but for them.
Blow, blow, blow.
The snow.
Blow, blow, blow.
The snow.
It ruffles wrists of poles as ankles of a queen.
It steals its artisans and night they have been.
The night they have been.
The snow. It reaches to the fences.
The snow.
It wraps it rail by rail.
The snow.
Till it is lost in fleeces. It deals a crystal veil.
The snow.
On stomp and stacking stems.
The snow.
The summer's empty rooms.
The snow.
Acres of seeds of harvest were recorded but for them. Blow, blow, blow. The snow.
Blow, blow, blow.
The snow.
The snow.
The snow.
The snow.
The snow, the snow, the snow.
Let's hear it again for our wonderful choir, under the direction of Ms. LaRue. Students sound incredible. Thank you again for sharing that performance with us. Well done, well done. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Justin Adams, VHS Tanner Building Principal, Master Sergeant Marcus Nelson, Air Force Regional Director Colonel Garcia, and U.S. Coast Guard Petty Officer Angel Cruz, to recognize two VHS Air Force Junior ROTC cadets who are presented with humanitarian ribbons.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is with great pride and excitement to showcase what two of our AFJ ROTC student leaders have accomplished over the course of their tenure at Violin High School. And before I begin, I do apologize to our select choir students. I'm right on top of you guys, but that's okay. I just wanted to acknowledge President Kim Cottisbody and her commitment and her backing of our ROTC program. She was a stalwart in getting the program here, and she is a champion of our program and everything that it does. So to Ms. Cottisbody, we certainly appreciate everything you have done for our students. We do have Cadet Major Conrad and Cadet Colonel Gonzalez here with us tonight, and they have demonstrated two of the elite traits that our JROTC program is built upon, including service to self, service before self, and excellence in all that we do. I don't want to take too much time, but both Cadet Major Conrad and Cadet Colonel Gonzalez are beyond deserving of their recognitions based upon their accomplishments. And a shout out to many of their co-cadets for coming out to support them. Our ROTC program is truly a family program. In short, Cadet Colonel Gonzalez is part of the JROTC leadership and steers all of the logistics for volunteerism, and she helped generate above and beyond a thousand hours of community service just last year alone. Cadet Major Conrad led a selfless effort after North Carolina was devastated by the impact of Hurricane Helene last year, gathering thousands of pounds of food and essential items to those that were in need. And he took his time while most students or most kids his age are out on the weekends having fun with their friends. He took his time to go to another state eight hours away to deliver essential items that they needed. To put that into perspective, I think I'm a reasonably successful professional at this stage in my life, but I was barely doing my own laundry. And they are literally changing the lives of thousands of people on a regular basis. Their commitment to our community and to our country as a whole is absolutely incredible, and it is something that I strive for all of our students to do. I couldn't be more proud of them, and I couldn't think of two other young adults that are more deserving of recognition. Presenting here tonight behind me are Regional Director Garcia and Petty Officer Cruz, and I will see the microphone and presentation privileges to them.
Thank you very much. So I'm the Regional Director for Air Force Junior ROTC for all of New Jersey, New York State, Pennsylvania, and Connecticut. And this is only the second time in my career in three years that I've had the pleasure and the honor of being part of awarding the humanitarian awards. So that's very good. I am not surprised that is from a student at Violin. So I've been coming here the past three years, every year, to inspect the program, and I'm always impressed with the quality of these young men and women. Not only the color guard that we saw here earlier today, but every single member of the cadet corps, with the instructors, past and present, with Ms. Muller, Joe Denise, I think you're over there, right? There you go. With the support of Mr. Adams, as well as the Board of Education. Our program is based, one of the foundations is community service. And there's community service, cleaning up a park, collecting toys, you know, for tots, things like that. And then there is collecting and distributing much-needed supplies to American citizens that have been devastated by a natural disaster hundreds of miles away. So there's community service, and there's community service. This is the second of those. Master Sergeant, if you would publish the orders, please.
Cadet Austin Conrad, front and center, and face the crowd. That crowd.
That crowd?
Yes, that crowd over there. Front and center. Slide over. There you go, right there. Attention to orders. Citation to accompany the award of the Air Force JROTC Cadet Humanitarian Award II, at the time, Cadet Technical Sergeant Austin K. Conrad. Cadet Technical Sergeant Austin K. Conrad distinguished himself by humanitarian actions that epitomized the Air Force Corps values of service before self. When Hurricane Helene devastated the community of Linville Falls, North Carolina, Cadet Conrad developed and implemented a plan of action to provide relief. Cadet Conrad led an effort to collect over 12,000 pounds of much-needed supplies for the citizens of Linville Falls. On October 20th, 2024, Cadet Conrad traveled 600 miles to North Carolina with his family, towing a fully loaded trailer to deliver the desperately needed supplies. While there, he also assisted with post-hurricane cleanup and relief efforts. Cadet Conrad's superior work ethic and tireless hours of labor helped over 300 members of the Linville Falls community. Overall, the supportive and humanitarian actions of Cadet Conrad reflect credit upon himself. JROTC Unit NJ 200009-1, Violin High School, the City of Vineland, Air Force JROTC. Signed, 12 June 2025, by Colonel Matthew Tipton, Director, Air Force JROTC. Here to present the recognition is Colonel James Garcia, Regional Director for ROTC, who drove here from Plainfield High School. Cadet Conrad, you may be seated. As you were.
Front and center again, please. And then can we have Cadet Gonzalez front and center as well? While she makes her way front and center, my name is Petty Officer Angel Cruz. I represent the United States Coast Guard, and we are the lead maritime law enforcement agency of the United States, as well as the oldest continuous seagoing service of the United States as well. With that, we have our core values of honor, respect, and devotion to duty. Working closely with our high school cadets and our JROTC programs and instructors, the Coast Guard is proud to nominate two individuals from their instructors and then award two cadets every school year that show the honor, respect, and devotion to duty in their daily lives. And these two cadets have done everything to prove to them, their community, and their families, and to the school district, that they put themselves last when it comes to service. They make sure everyone is valued first. They make sure everyone is okay and taken care of before they ever put themselves first. And that takes a lot, especially nowadays, right? Self-giving individuals are all around us, but those that give themselves to everyone means the world. So I want to thank you today, and I want to award you the Core Values Medal, as well with a ribbon, for honor, respect, and devotion to duty for your daily lives and what you've given to the community. So here with me, Seaman Turrisi, we're going to present these awards. Thank you.
Well done. We're so excited to have the opportunity to recognize greatness from our high school students. Thank you, Mr. Masonette, Mr. Adams, for bringing this group of students before us today and helping us support and celebrate their accomplishments. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Musterell to join me at the podium.
Good evening. Tonight, we extend our deep appreciation to Mr. John Sabrana for his years of dedicated service to the Violin Board of Education. A lifelong resident of Vineland and a proud graduate of Violin High School, Mr. Sabrana has devoted more than four decades to serving the public through communications, journalism, and elected official office.
and elected official office. Mr. Sabrana is completing his 10th year on the Board of Education, having served three full terms in addition to an earlier one-year term. Before joining the Board, he spent 20 years as district's first communications coordinator, and later as Executive Director of Communications. His leadership helped establish a strong foundation for how Vineland Public Schools communicates with families and the broader community, especially during a period of rapid technological change. Under his guidance, the district expanded its communication efforts, launched new broadcast channels, and built a student-driven media program that has become a point of pride for Vineland High School. His commitment to elevating student voices and providing real-world opportunities for young people has left an enduring mark on the district. Mr. Sabrana's career reflects a lifelong passion for storytelling, public service, and community engagement. Whether through journalism, district communications, or his work on the Board, he has consistently championed transparency, accessibility, and the belief that public schools are the heart of the thriving community. Mr. Sabrana is also a dedicated husband, father, and grandfather. He and his wife Carla share a strong commitment to education, and he takes great pride in his two sons and three grandchildren. Their support has been an important part of his service to the Board and to his community. We thank Mr. Sabrana for his steadfast dedication to service to generations of Vineland students and family, and the lasting contribution he has made to the district. His leadership and commitment will continue to be felt long after his tenure concludes. Mrs. Sabrana?
Tonight, we also recognize... Oh, let's hear another round of applause for Mrs. Sabrana. Thank you. Tonight, we also recognize and thank Mrs. Kimberly Cottisbadi for her decade of dedicated service to the Vineland Board of Education. Over the past 10 years, and through two consecutive terms as Board President, Mrs. Cottisbadi has been a steady, thoughtful leader, whose decisions have always centered on what is best for our students, our families, and our educators. Her commitment to the community extends far beyond the walls of our schools. In her work with county government and through her many volunteer organizations, Mrs. Cottisbadi has continuously demonstrated her belief in supporting and uplifting others. She brings that same compassion and sense of responsibility to her work in education. As a devoted wife, mother of two, and proud grandmother of five, Mrs. Cottisbadi understands the hopes all families have for their children. Her dedication to ensuring equitable opportunities for every student has been a guiding force throughout her tenure, and her leadership has left a meaningful and lasting impact on this district. We extend our deepest appreciation to Mrs. Cottisbadi for her service, her leadership, and her unwavering commitment to the students of Vineland. Her contributions will continue to benefit this community for many years to come. Please join me in congratulating and recognizing Mrs. Cottisbadi. We're also presenting this evening the portrait that'll be hung along with all the
Are there any questions or comments on the HIBR suspension reports? Do we have any question or comments on the minutes for the approval of minutes from November 10th, 2025 combined meeting and executive session? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? No. Roll call, please.
Mr. Burner?
Yes, everything except six. I have to abstain from six.
The motion is for approval of minutes for the 11, 10, 25 combined meeting and executive session?
Yeah, I did not attend the meeting. I did review them, but I did not attend.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
I have to abstain from the approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Mrs. Vasquez?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbadi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have any committee reports this evening? Seeing none? Do I have a public meeting report by the Board Solicitor?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Do we have our student representative here?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tremobi Okafour, and I am the Senior Class President at Vineland High School. The weeks following our last meeting have been just as busy as the weeks leading up to it. As I previously mentioned, we hosted our Powder Puff Game, which was a huge success and so much fun for all the students, even in the cold winter weather. Of course, the seniors had to take the win, and the sophomores also won our first-ever pregame. It was such an enjoyable event, and I would definitely miss it next year. We also held our annual Thanksgiving bonfire filled with food, games, and music. It was a wonderful event to be a part of. This month, we have just as much excitement ahead. VHS is getting into the holiday spirit with our annual door decorating contest. Home rooms will compete for the popular vote for best decorated door, and judging will begin soon. This year's winner concert for choir will be held on December 16th. Doors open at 6:00 PM, and the show begins at 6:30. The winner concert is the perfect holiday evening activity for community members, and it is completely free to all guests. The select choir would love a strong attendance, as we have worked very hard to prepare the concert with our Director, Ms. Larue. Two days later, we will hold the winner band and strings concert. We encourage everyone to come out and support these students, who have dedicated countless hours to practicing their music. Before I conclude, I also want to take a moment to sincerely thank our Board Member, Mrs. Cottisbadi, for everything she has done and contributed to Vineland High School. We have had the great privilege of being led by such a monumental woman for so many years, and we at Vineland High School truly appreciate and express our gratitude for her dedication, commitment, and service. My mom always reminds me that leadership is action, not just position, and we thank you, Mrs. Cottisbadi, for being a true model of that. Although we still have about three weeks left of school, on behalf of the senior class and everyone at Vineland High School, I'd like to wish you all a happy holidays, and I'll see you all next year. Thank you.
We do.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Santos. As you are aware, I'm here to share my continued grievances with you, the Board. I'm here with my daughter, who was bullied at Johnstone Middle School. I do not wish to overshadow the night with my comments about the mishandling of bullying in Vineland schools. Surely, there are countless students and good staff who have contributed to the well-being of this educational system, and truly, I thank you. It goes without saying that we need good teachers, and the ones at Johnstone Middle School are truly phenomenal. My frustration still continues to be with you, the Board, and Johnstone School Administration. I'm here because I still have not heard back from anyone regarding my demands for more oversight on the HIBR process, which is overseen by Ishmael Bermudez, the Anti-Bullying Coordinator. By now, it is clear that despite numerous policies stating parental involvement to be included in bullying reform, it is rarely the case. I can guarantee you that you will have my involvement. I can say this is by my experience and by that of many parents who have reached out to me. I can also say this by the very design of these local policies. Many of them lack common sense. Principals should not be in a position to reject bullying claims via the HIB process if a parent is claiming that the principal is hiding evidence. More oversight is needed, and I promise you, I will be here every month. You will hear me, and I will not stop. Other parents have reached out to me, and the stories I'm hearing are heartbreaking. Until policies are changed soon enough, there will be a parent with a 504 or an IEP who is mistreated, and then probably you will act accordingly. I am confident that my wake-up calls will move change, and I've already seen some of them thus far. Legal counsel would likely be the best solution in some of these cases, seeing how some Board Members like to shift meeting dates with parents like a shell game. Speaking of which, Dennis Rivera, I have not heard back from you. You had said that you would speak to the Board Solicitor to speak with me, because I had made claims that you were avoiding me. And also, Dennis, I sent you an email about Policy 5756. I still want to know where you stand. It is going to take far beyond rebranding and photo ops. You will have to make genuine changes in the anti-bullying process. Now, no one is above constructive criticism. Myself, as a devout Christian, I would criticize even those who claim to be a part of my faith using sacred altars for their board campaigning. You should respond to the public and have the ability to debate these ideas publicly. If it was your kid, you'd be doing it as well. How many kids are hurting themselves? How many other kids are becoming bullies themselves because they've been bullying? These are my closing comments. We need the Lord. I will see you next month.
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent Yano, guests, those tuning in at home. My name is Jessica Supa. I've been a proud Vineland Public School teacher for 25 years, 15 of them right in this historic building. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Vineland High School softball program. I know that there are coaching positions up for approval tonight, and I just wanted to share that I recently applied for a coaching position, but was recently informed that I would be offered... I applied for the head coaching position and recently was informed that I would be offered an assistant position. Back early in October, when I learned that Mike Reed would be stepping down, I did report to the Athletic Director's Office to introduce myself and to make him aware of my interest in the program and coaching. And working closely for the past two years with Mike Reed and the coaching staff and building a successful program and the rapport with the girls and the team, I felt qualified to apply for the position. I've been waiting for an interview and unfortunately informed yesterday about offering the assistant position, which I understand. I'm just requesting, I guess, for the Board to please look into the process to ensure that all qualified applicants are taken into consideration before voting. All right? If you have any questions, you can reach out to me, and I appreciate you looking into it further.
Scott, could you repeat the name, please? Joe Denise Bolton-Muller?
Good evening, honorable Board Members, administrators, community, and those that are out in our community watching on TV. I come here today to speak to you on behalf of the Air Force JRTC program, but as a mom, so I get to be a mom tonight. As everybody knows, I am one of the instructors at the Air Force JRTC program. So that you can understand how important this program is, not only to our cadets, but to the parents. I can tell you that in 2009, this program started. It was started by Major Simpson. He had only about 57 cadets at the time. The very next year, when it was opened up to ninth graders, my oldest son, who is now 30, joined in. This was a kid that did not want to be social or do things, but when Major Simpson reached out to him in a cafeteria, he really wanted to join. He always wanted to be in the military. I have seen more kids like that that we reach out to and have seen their lives changed. And those cadets out there are some of them. Just some of the hundreds of cadets that I've had the privilege and honor of seeing their lives change, who are now out on cutters, who are now owning their own businesses, because our mission is to create a better citizen, better characters for our society. It's not to make them into military men and women. It's to make them better people, and our cadets turn out better each time. And I can say this as a mom, because I had a child that came through this program, and he turned out to be very successful at 30 years old, becoming a fireman, correctional officer, owning his own house, and all at a very young age, meeting many milestones in this school, Vineland Public School. And those cadets out there, now being a proud mother of two more, one that just received an honor tonight, and one that is a ninth grader, I can't tell you how important programs like this are. And not just the Air Force JRTC program, all of our Vineland High School programs, our choir, our ceramics, our everything. These are things I didn't have when I was a VHS student in '93, and it is because of the support of all of you up there and the support of all of you out there that our students now have opportunities that kids like me did not have at the time. And I want to thank all of you for the support that you show them. They notice. They notice everything. So on behalf of a mother, and an instructor, and employee, thank you so much for everything you do. Ms. Cottisbadi, I want to say... Ms. Cottisbody, I want to say thank you. I wish you well for everything. Your support has meant the world to us, and I wish you luck. Thank you.
Pastor Albert Jimenez?
Good evening, Madam President, board members, Superintendent Yano, administration, parents, students, staff, and all stakeholders in our district. My name is Pastor Albert Jimenez of Well of Hope Fellowship Church here in Violin. Also a member of the Hispanic Pastors Association. And I'm here because I thought it was important to recognize Ms. Kim Cottisbody for her tenure on the Board of Education. She has been a constant supporter of the various programs that have benefited our students in this district, like the CTE program, the Junior ROTC program, and other initiatives taken during her tenure as a board member than as board president. She was instrumental with the others on the board to ensure parents' rights were not being violated. The church and the community thanks you for this effort. She made her presence known in the countless activities she attended throughout the district. She fought hard for our new armed guards in our schools to provide a level of safety for all who enter the buildings. We thank you for that. I know she could not have done this on her own, so I thank those of you on the board that supported her tenure as board president, and even those that didn't see eye to eye but were respectful of her passion and desire to provide our students with the best educational experience possible. Madam President, thank you for your service, and I'd like to close in prayer. Father, we come before you in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank you for the time and heart of service Kim has provided to this board, our students, and our community. We pray that you will bless her in whatever you have in store for the next chapter in her life. Bless her, bless her, her husband and her family. In Jesus' name we pray these things. Amen and amen. Thank you.
Cadet Major Austin Conrad?
Good evening, board members. On behalf of myself and Cadet Colonel Gonzalez, I would like to express my sincere appreciation for everything that you all have done for our program. Your constant support for our Air Force JRTC program means more than words can say. With the program exceeding 1,216 community service hours so far as the 2025 year ends and the 2026 year is about to start, we could have not have done it without all of your guys' support. Thank you for always being there for us, encouraging us, and showing us how much you guys care about our success. We are especially grateful for your presence at our event to present Cadet Colonel Gonzalez and myself to these awards. Your support made the event more meaningful, and dedication to our unit is truly respected and valued. Thank you again for all you do. Your kindness, your leadership, and your commitment expires us every day. We look forward to seeing you all at our massive inspection on December 18th. With appreciation, Cadet Major Conrad. Thank you.
Jaslyn Gonzalez?
Good evening. I'm Cadet Colonel Gonzalez, Corps Commander for the AFJ ROTC unit. We would like to update you with some important information about our unit. For community service, our program alone has made exactly 1,216 community service hours since the Puerto Rican Parade on July 20th, 2025. The numbers will only continue to grow tremendously as the school year moves on. For our major events, Operation Linville Falls, on October 24th, 2024, Hurricane Helene hit the U.S. and a group of students from VHS AFJ ROTC came together to support to those in need. Cadet Major Conrad Austin oversaw and superheaded a supply drive aimed at providing much-needed relief to the hard-hit Linville Fall. For our Veterans Social, for the past three years, six veterans have come to VHS to educate every cadet about their experiences in the military and what to expect. Our Run for Ramirez started four years ago, including this year. In honor of Master Sergeant Joseph Ramirez, in the past three years, three cadets, one female, one male, and one undergrad, were gifted $1,000, another $1,000, and $500 scholarships. Therefore, in the past three years alone, we have gathered $7,000. For the past four years, the instructors have had a four-year plan helping bring up the new generation of AFJ ROTC cadets. This year alone, we have gained 74 cadets, and it only grows by the week. Our instructors have tirelessly guided the four-year program through their four-year plan and set them up for their success in their future and to show the future cadets how to run our exceptional program with organization, patience, knowledge, and confidence. And to Ms. Cottisbody, on behalf of the VHS AFJ ROTC program, we want to express our sincere appreciation for your years of service and dedication. Your insight, commitment, leadership, and support have made a lasting impact on the Violin Public Schools, and we are truly grateful and proud of all you have contributed and accomplished. As you begin this next chapter, we wish you the very best. May your future be filled with new opportunities, fulfillment, and the same success you have brought to our school district. Thank you again for everything, and you will greatly be missed. With warm regards, Cadet Colonel Jaslyn Gonzalez, the Cadet Corps Commander and the VHS AFJ ROTC Unit NJ2009-1.
Mr. Scott English?
How do you top that? Think about that. In true former board president, once a board member, always a board member fashion, let it be read into the record Cedric Holmes arrived at 502 this evening. Okay, so we established a little business. And then I started taking notes over what I wanted to say tonight. As board members, the public still thinks we get paid, and I say "we" because once a board member, always a board member. You might as well just turn that thing off over there because, you know, I know the rules, all right? But enough, sometimes, sometimes you have to go over that time limit a little bit. Mr. O'Kelfer, true professionalism at the podium, articulate, easy to understand, wise beyond your years. Cadet Austin Conrad, Cadet Colonel Jaslyn Gonzalez. Words like honor, integrity, work ethic, accountability come to mind. Yes, we don't get paid, but we got paid tonight. That's what it's all about. You can't forget why we sit in these seats. The passion will always be here, and it's a blessing to come home, because this was my home for many years. We talk about the paycheck again. Select Choir coming up here, performing, not as big as it used to be, but it's not about the numbers, it's about the product, the product they put out there, the energy. That's what fuels the passion to sit in those seats. All right? We hear the public speak often. It's positive, sometimes it's negative, but that's what we sign up for. Okay? Yes, there's going to be a solution. Unfortunately, sometimes it's not the answer that you want to hear. Robert's Rules handicaps us big time sometimes. Mr. Zosanto always let me toe the line. This young solicitor here, I would have gave her a run for her money. That's for sure, but it was always done in a respectful way. I want to congratulate Mr. Fioki, Ms. Vasquez, Mr. Santiago on your recent election victories, and thank you to all the candidates for having the courage to put your name on the ballot. I urge you to continue supporting the elected winners and to use your voice to let the board know the pulse of what is happening in our town and schools. We only know what we're being told, and it's a fine line, because when a good idea is, I always said it, they love the, everyone loves the idea. When it's not such an idea in favor, the dreaded word micromanagement rolls out. Okay? It happens, but we're still a team. We're still a team. We don't have to sing kumbaya together, but we got to work together. You got me? I had a little agenda tonight because you know me, I'm all about the proper planning prevents poor performance. I'll close tonight paying homage to two of my previous board members that I served with, that I respect. And I should have said first and foremost, good evening, Madam President, Vice President Sabrana, Superintendent Yano, and distinguished board members, because you do have a thankless job. I walked a mile in them shoes, and I loved every second of it. Okay? I love when my name got called out, because that made me sharpen my pencil, making sure I'm bringing my A-game. That's it. There's only one game to bring. It's your A-game. That's what we teach our kids. Okay? That's what we're all about. How about that? I turned to the first page. I want to talk a little about the role, the role of a New Jersey School Board Member. A New Jersey School Board Member is an elected local official responsible for governing the public school district. The job centers on leadership, accountability, and keeping students first. Some of the core duties, okay? Set policy, approve and oversee the budget, hire and evaluate the superintendent, establish district goals, ensure legal compliance, represent the community as you do well. I'm actually giving you the Cliff Notes. Practice ethical governance, oversee facilities and operations, participate in negotiations, monitor student performance. The bottom line, a New Jersey School Board Member safeguards the district, supports the effective leadership, and works to ensure every student receives a high-quality education, every student. This is a public trust role that demands commitment, preparation, and steady judgment. It is a thankless yet rewarding job when you are in it for the right reasons. Oh, no, Kim. If I was going, this is your last meeting, I'm going out in big style. Okay?
Three minutes is up.
Little words of wisdom. I give to you tonight something I did a while back, but it's a great refresher course, because sometimes the titles get in the way of what we and who we really are. Okay? My Ten Commandments, I gave them to you a long time ago. You love them, I know. Kim's rolling her eyes. Number one, this is what I think board members should represent. Fight for what is best for all students and fair for all taxpayers. Number two, it should never be me, always we. Remember, there's no "I" in VBOE. Listen to what makes, listen to what someone has to say, but never assume or commit your answer until you do the homework and know the facts. Number four, treat people the way you like to be treated. Number five, never leave a board meeting wishing you would have or should have said something. Never had a problem with that in my tenure as a board member, never. Don't ever get in that car and wish you would have. Be an independent thinker, not a rubber stamper. Be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Number eight, you do this well, lead by example. Number nine, decisions should never be personal. Leave your agenda and personality in the parking lot. And finally, number 10, this is the most important one that I learned a long time ago from my grandfather. It's how I ran a successful business and now, crazy enough, entered the teaching world. CCT, Communication, Collaboration, and Transparency. Practice that, and it'll never be a problem. That's the key to success. I shared that with you. You can make a paper airplane out of it. I maybe even gave you a couple extra. Give it to the new incoming board members.
Mr. English, I apologize, and I know you said you were going to give me a run for my money, but during public comment, it is a three-minute time limit. I think we've given a little bit of leeway because, okay, can I finish what I had to say? Okay. But if you could just kindly wrap it up, I completely understand.
I thank you for your, would you like me to wrap up now?
I would, if you can, I'd appreciate it.
I will come back, my dear.
Okay.
And discuss a little bit about career technical education, because I think it's important for our students to get back to the vocational world. You don't have to worry about me asking you to open your wallet tonight, Mr. Mustarel. You've been saved by our solicitor there. I would now like to talk a little bit about John Sabrana. This is my closing. No, thank you. I would have fun with you. John was a key figure in developing VPS broadcasting and one of Violin's most reliable voices in local media. He brought technical expertise, creativity, and a calm professionalism to every project, delivering a high-quality coverage of high school sports, cutting-edge televised VBOE meetings, civic events, and community stories across South Jersey. John also served in the Violin Public School District, taking on many roles, including educational media, video production, district communication, and was often the go-to person for urgent issues. Exactly how many fires did you extinguish, Mr. Sabrana? He highlighted student achievement, showcased school events, and strengthened the district's connection to the community through clear, polished communication. He even managed to make me look more handsome on the screen during our televised board meetings, which is no small feat. When I decided to run for the Violin Board of Education in 2010, maybe before some of you were born up there, wow, 15 years have passed. John was the first district employee to oppose the status quo, filling my home mailbox with DVDs and sharing his insight on what the district needed at a critical time of change. That marked the start of a friendship that continues to this day. As of now, John is attending his final Violin Board of Education meeting. He leaves with him an admirable record of service, leadership, and a lasting impact on both the district and the Violin community. John, or Goose, as I like to call you, I'd like to thank you for your years of service to the Violin Public School District and for going against the grain when some people don't have the courage to, that are employees in the school district. And now, my friend, Kim Cottisbody. Kim is the definition of someone who wears many titles and handles every one of and handles every one of them with confidence. When I was VBO president, she was always the steady hand right there with me. Now she is the face of our current board. And today she is running her last official televised Violin Board of Education meeting, going out on your terms. And it feels pretty good, doesn't it? You should be proud. What makes Kim stand out is that she always fought for the students, no matter what the room looked like. She pushed for what she believed was right, even when it was not the popular choice. And she was never afraid to say no when no was the right answer. That takes guts and conviction. Strong words. You learn from somebody. I like that. Kim and I built a friendship on trust and work ethic. We did not always agree. And we had our moments where we did not speak for a few weeks because the topic was rather heated. But that is what makes a real team. You fight for what you believe in. You stand your ground. And when the dust settles, you can still separate the business from the friendship. That balance is rare, and she and I managed to pull that off quite well. I don't come here for just anybody. And for anyone who thinks it is easy to hold the gavel, they need to walk a mile in our shoes. It is a title, sure, but it demands serious organization, the patience to handle all kinds of personalities, a cool head when things get loud, and the ability to lead by example every single day. It is more than just a portrait hanging on a wall. We do not do this for the accolades. We do it because the work matters and the kids deserve the best that we can give them. Kim leaves knowing she gave her everything. She had to, she, everything she had to this district and its students. Her leadership has made a real difference. And I thank you for years of service to the Violin Public School District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak longer. Some of us have a little to learn, but I'll get your name and number. Everybody wants a yes, but somebody's got to get a no, which is a simple two-letter word, but sometimes so hard for people to understand. I wish everybody here and up there a joyous and happy holiday season. And thank you for the, the privilege to,
Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none?
Mr. Rayano, do you have any items for discussion?
Yes, requesting discussion and approval regarding personnel items 1.1 through 1.2.
Questions or comments?
Question. Superintendent Yano, I have a question. Can you go over the coaching hiring process for us? Seems that the integrity of the process seems to be in question. Excuse me. Could you assure us that the district process is being followed, allowing an equal opportunity to all that apply? Thank you.
Yes, there is a posting that goes out for a position through the Human Resources Department. Letters are submitted to the athletics office within a certain timeline. And then those applications are reviewed. Sometimes there's multiple applicants, which requires interviews. Sometimes there's only one applicant for a position. The athletics team goes through all those packets, makes recommendations. Then they come over to Human Resources for our review, our agenda review. And also, if we discover there's an anomaly, we'll pull some items off the agenda so we can make sure we follow the correct process. So we'll be reposting the assistant, assistant softball position, assistant softball coach position for action on the January agenda. We found that there were some questions around that item. So we want to make sure we're following the clean process. Repost, reapplications, and then the athletics team will make a recommendation from there. So that's the only one that's come up recently, but that is the process we follow.
Do we allow or extend an invitation to any of our senior coaches that have been coaching for a team for, you know, prior to the position being posted? Just, just interested to know if that's, and anyone on that panel over there, please feel free to, if you know the answer, let me know.
Anyone who would like the position has to apply for the position.
So, so for instance, in, in this particular case, we'll talk about softball since it was brought up tonight. We have an assistant coach that has been part of the, you know, winning culture for Violin High School for some time now. That brought up, you know, the, the integrity of the process, if you will. That's, that's where I'm getting at. Do we extend it to any coaches that have been part of the, the team prior to it getting posted? You know, if, when Coach Russo was coach of the football team, you know, when he made it aware that he was not going to coach any longer. Did we go to his assistant coach? Is anyone that was with that, that program at the time and said, hey, is anyone interested in coaching? That's, I'm just trying to get the legwork on that end.
In that scenario, head coach stepped down, applications, a, a notice for applicants went out. There was multiple applicants who applied in district and at a district. And the board made a decision to go with the in-district, one of the assistant coaches, Coach, Coach Guzman. But there was a process to follow.
But prior to that, you went to them and discussed it? Or they brought it up to you that said, I have interest that I would like to take that job?
The application procedures, they, they submit an application, a letter of interest. That is their interest in the position. We need that to proceed.
Is there a strict timeline that we?
Yes, there's a timeline.
Is it like a two-week window, a month window?
Dr. Speakman, do you recall the timeline for, off the top of your head? For, well, I guess that would be.
Let's say spring coaches, for the spring coaches. From the time the postings went out until, you know, we decided on interviews process, like, is that a, is there a strict timeline for that? Thank you, guys.
Good evening. I can look back on the exact date. So we did put it out. It goes out to our violin.org. Oh, look at that service. If I can look up. I want to say it was the end of October. And, you know, the goal was to have it on this agenda. And Policy and Personnel met a little bit earlier. So, you know, I made the committee aware that we would work on coaches over the Thanksgiving break to have them. So I would say probably about three-week timeline. Yeah, depending on, sometimes more or less.
So, Dr. Speakman, may I?
So, so our document says November 11th.
Okay.
And closed on November 22nd.
Okay, so this was a shorter timeline.
Yeah, Cedric just pulled that up. I'm sorry, Donna.
No, 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 that's fine. What I was going to say is, so if somebody submits a letter of interest?
Yes.
There's a cutoff date for those.
Correct.
There's a cutoff date for applying. There's a cutoff, there's cutoff dates as, as this process goes along. Is that correct?
Correct. And this was a letter of interest submitted to Mr. Haynes, our interim athletic director. And then the list is submitted to, the complete list is submitted to us and our Human Resources and our team. We work through the required documents. You notice there's some pending documents on tonight that will work with making sure they have the substitute certification, background check. And many are repeat coming back, but, you know, to make sure that all doc, documents, they cannot begin coaching until all the documents are cleared.
I also have a question.
Doc, my last one, I promise. Dr. Speakman, so that being said, with this process, all the approved coaches on tonight's agenda, was that process followed by all the approved coaches on the list? For all the positions? Did they follow the process to the timelines? And obviously, they were approved by Policy and Personnel.
To my knowledge, yes. And Policy and Personnel, I did email after our meeting. I emailed the list of coaches, just because it wasn't, the, the timeline didn't match with our Policy and Personnel meeting. Just due to the holiday.
And then that email goes out to the entire district?
It does. And it's posted, you know, I, it is posted through Frontline, our formal application process as well. But it has a little, you know, no, it's not, you don't have to do the full online application. It directs you to email Mr. Haynes. And of course, they, you know, they could reach out to me and I would just forward anything if I received as well.
Okay, thank you for your help. Appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Is everyone that applies given an interview? Everyone that is interested and applies, are they guaranteed an interview?
I will have to touch base with our athletic department regarding that. I deal with the end result, so I will, I'll get some clarification on that process for you.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I apologize, who was first and who was second?
Cedric was first.
Mrs. Perez was second.
Thank you. This is for 1.1 and 1.2, correct? Thank you.
Is the softball coach coming off this agenda? Okay. Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes, but I recuse myself from lying 12 on the replacement hires.
Yes to everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Vasquez?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would like to congratulate Mr. Newton. And I would like to congratulate our retirees, especially my good friend, Mrs. Alrich, who deserves this well-deserved retirement. Mr. Newton, thank you. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, board members, everyone over there, central administration. I really appreciate the opportunity to lead the alternative school programs for Violin. I'm beyond excited to continue to grow in this district. I graduated from Violin High School in '02, and I've been here my entire 16-year career now. And it, it really is a privilege to continue to grow here. I'm looking forward to the new opportunity. And I thank you for your vote of confidence in the position. So thank you. I'm looking forward to it. Have a good night.
Requesting discussion and approval for procedures and operations, items 2.1 through 2.5.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Vasquez?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana? Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding finance, items 4.1 through 4.16.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Vasquez?
Yes.
Mr. Sabr, Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Regular agenda items, none. Proposed items for review or discussion by or adoption by board members, there are none. Are there any questions or comments on our itemized bill pay list for October 2025? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
I have to recuse myself from vendor number 1074 and 1333. And yes to everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Vasquez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no emergent items. Old business, new business. Board member and superintendent remarks. I'm going to start with Mr. Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the Air Force R O T C for leading us in the flag salute. Also like to thank the Select Choir in the medley, the Christmas medley, and the singing of the National Anthem as well. I've used this term before, and we've seen tonight with you, that group right there in the Select Choir, some of our crown jewels here in Violin Public Schools. And so proud to have you guys do what you do on a daily basis, even the things that no one sees. And we are proud of you. We thank you for your service. And we can't wait to see what else is coming from you guys. So thank you once again. To Cadet, specifically to Cadet Conrad and Cadet Gonzalez. Well done. Well done. It like, makes me kind of, my chest explode when I, when I'm hearing all the accomplishments that, that you guys did and you guys have performed. Again, not, you don't do it for the, for the notoriety. You don't do it for the headlines. You do it because it's the right thing to do. And a shout-out goes out to their parents. Thank you. Thank you for raising upstanding citizens. Thank you for raising, you know, citizens that, when they get older, they're just going to accomplish even greater things than they've done up to this point. So thank you, parents, for raising these amazing young people. Thank you, Ms. Okafor, as always, for that update from Violin High School. We always appreciate your updates. And we, we thank you for always keeping us up to, to date what's going on at the high school. This week, I had the opportunity to, along with Superintendent Yano, to meet with students at Johnstone School. We had a nice, nice meeting with some of the students. We had, we heard their concerns. We heard their likes and dislikes. We, and, and always, you know, we, we like to hear things like that because it's unfiltered, you know? It's, it's things that they honestly are in their hearts and in their minds. And, and it helps us make better decisions moving forward. And they are going to benefit all of our students. So I thank you, I thank the, the students at Johnstone for that. As always, thank you for every member of the public that comes up and speaks. As always, we're always appreciative, whether we agree or disagree with whatever is said. Always thankful and always asking that you keep on speaking and letting us know what's going on. To Mr. John Sabrana, thank you for your service, Mr. Sabrana. For many years, you and I were tablemates over here. And we, we laughed sometimes. We made some, you know, jabs at each other sometimes. But it was always a professional relationship, which I appreciate, Mrs. Sabrana. Thank you for your insights, your experience, your wisdom that you bestowed upon myself as a, as a new board member when I first came on. I appreciate all the time that you took out to kind of put me under your wing as we sat here together for those few years that we did. So, Kim? Don't look at me, Kim, I'm going to start crying. No. Kim, I appreciate your, your leadership. I do. You were one of the first people, if not the first person, to reach out to me when I first got elected back in 2021 as I recovered from COVID. And I didn't want to talk to anybody. You consistently called me and left me multiple voicemails, which I had no choice but to answer. Finally called back. But I, I thank you. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for, again, your wisdom as well. Thank you for allowing me to pick your brain many times. Thank you for, for allowing me to be a soundboard sometimes for you as well. I really appreciate everything you've done for me. I really appreciate everything you've done for the school district. Thank you for your years of service to the school district. You will be missed, but we know you're only a phone call away, and I'm sure you will not stop calling us. Thank you. Thank you to you both. We really do appreciate your time that you have given us and your, and your energy. And, and thank you to the families. Thank you to the, to the spouses for letting them serve on this board and, and taking time away from, from, from your families. And we really do appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much. And finally, I'd like to wish everyone, every one of our students' families, households here in Vineland a Merry Christmas. To our Jewish brothers and sisters, Happy Hanukkah. It is an important time of year. It always sneaks up on me. This time of year is it's tough for many people. Because, um thank you. Because, um we remember those we've lost. And there's always that empty spot at the table. Where so much should be. In my case, two spots. So, I say that because I would like everyone to remember that life is short. Hug those that you love. Say "I love you" to those that you love. And just remember that. Appreciate while you have them here, every moment that you can. Because life throws us curveballs sometimes, and it's never easy. But I like to, to, to just express that, because I felt that was important. And, um again, thank you. We're closing out 2025 strong. I look forward to 2026 and the amazing things that are going to happen and are happening in this school district. And I'd like to wish Merry Christmas to the rest of my fellow board members, to our board solicitor. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah. Even to you, our business administrator as well, Scott Mustaral. I appreciate you all. Thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to serve with you all. I look forward to 2026. Good night.
Mr. Harris.
I have to follow that?
Yeah, I know. I'm going to have to go after you.
I want to move.
Me too.
I want to say, Mrs. Sabrana, thank you for your service to the school board. When I started out, you were working in the district as a juvenile sergeant, so I know you put a lot of time in, so I thank you for that. Ms. Cottis Patti? I just want to say, you're going to be a tough act to follow. I thank you. I'm so thankful that you were the board president for my first year. I wouldn't have been able to do it without you. Like the gentleman said, if you don't sit up here, you don't know. You have to make tough decisions. Everybody's not always happy. I'm so thankful I had you to guide me. Thank you for your dedication. I thank you for answering my phone calls, whatever time it was, my text messages. As a new board member, some of my text messages went unanswered, or it took time, not from you. So, I thank you for all the help you've given me. But then, your husband was my mentor, so I expected that. He was a good man. And chief, I thank you for sharing her with the district. My wife complains that I'm always going to do something, so I know it's not easy being a spouse of a board member, let alone the board president. So, thank you. To the children or teenagers, congratulations on your award. You guys look good in uniform. Continue with your careers. As a former military guy, I can tell you, if you choose to go in the military, it's a rewarding career serving your country. So, whatever you decide, thank you. And I'm not going to be long, so I want to say Merry Christmas to the city of Vineland. Happy Holidays, and that's it.
Mr. Silva?
I'd like to thank the Select Choir, the Air Force Junior R O T C. Thank you for everything you guys have done, you stand for, especially Cadet Conrad and Gonzalez. Congratulations on all the work you've done and all the community service. Mr. Okafor, thank you for providing us with the updates at Vineland High School. We appreciate that. So, in closing, tonight, we gather to honor two board members who, whose presence have truly made a difference. Kim and John have served on our school board with hearts full of dedication, compassion, and unwavering commitment for our students and our families in our community. Kim and John, your service hasn't been about policies or meetings. It's been about students in our community. You've listened when it mattered, spoken up when it counted, and shown up even when it wasn't easy. You brought kindness into every decision and clarity into every challenge. You've reminded us that leadership isn't about titles. It's about caring deeply and acting with a purpose. On behalf of all of us, thank you. Thank you for your time you gave, the patience you showed, and the steady belief you held that our kids deserve the very best. Your impact won't end tonight. It will continue in the hallways, classrooms, and futures you guys both have helped shape. So, thank you. Merry Christmas to you all and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Mrs. Vasquez?
These are tough facts to follow, for sure. But I want to first start with thanking Mr. Okafor for his presentation. You are a pleasure to listen to, and if the future looks like you, then we are going to be okay. And I also want to thank the Air Force Junior R O T C program, and especially Cadet Conrad and Cadet Gonzalez. Tonight, you brought tears to my eyes, how extremely proud I am as an alumni of VHS to see how hard you have worked. The fact that you cared enough to do that with your family and, and go all the way to North Carolina. Your future is bright, young man. I am absolutely sure that you're going to do great things in this life. You have a heart for it. But all of you, the fact that you are standing there in uniform, respecting the mission and vision of this program, the instructors, this is a proud moment. Tonight was definitely, as Mr. English said, a payday. People often ask why we do what we do, and this is why. And because it's not about money. This is a reward that we see, the future of our children. You are it, and this is why we do what we do. For that, I thank you. Select Choir, as Mr. Holmes, we're musical people here, and we appreciate the beautiful sounds that come out of our choir. And I'm so appreciative of that and blessing us tonight. And more importantly, our parents. You, you may not always see what is going on behind closed doors, but I can assure you that questions are being asked. While we are limited, we're not here to debate anyone. That's just not, it's, it's not what is allowed. We do take concern seriously, and questions and meetings are happening as we speak to get answers to the questions that many parents have concerning some of the issues here in our district. So, so sometimes when it is silent, please do not assume that things aren't happening. Things are happening, but there is a proper process for that. And, and for that, I just want to thank all the public for taking the time to speak tonight. And now, to, the most important thing tonight is, is speaking on the last meeting for Kim Cottis Patti, our president, our board president, and John Sabrana. As a newly-elected board member, my official tenure starts in January. And I can tell you that these are tough shoes to fill, that Mr. Santiago and I will do our best. Very tough shoes to fill. I've seen Mrs. Cottis Patti take courage, and, and John Sabrana, be very courageous when it came to Policy 5756. They took a position that not many people were willing to do, and yet you did it. You, you brought in armed guards for the safety of our children, when many were trying to do that for many years, and somehow it was done under your leadership. And for that, I'm so thankful. The example to all of us is to be courageous and do the right thing at all costs, because that is what the people have voted for us to do and to represent here. And for that, I thank you for that example for all of us. I thank you that you are just a phone call away. I have the pleasure and honor of working with her as well. And so, she's not, she's not going anywhere, but these are definitely tough shoes to fill, and it is an honor to sit here, although briefly, with you tonight. And I wish you and John the absolute best in your next endeavors.
Mr. Holmes?
We need them at every meeting. They do the best applauses. Thank you, guys, for being here and all your recognitions to the Vineland High School Select Choir for your holiday medley as an alumni of the Select Choir. I'm pleased to see that this program is still thriving, and like Scott said, it's about quality, not quantity. So, awesome job to both programs. Congratulations to Mr. Newton on his promotion as Principal of Cunningham. And also, I want to acknowledge our central administration for stepping in during a sensitive transition and coming up with solutions for that program. Awesome job on that. Glad to have Mr. English, now City Councilman, a friend and board mentor of mine. His insight is always valuable. So glad to have him. Only he can come back and speak for 12 minutes and 55 seconds. And lastly, to John and Kim, although we've disagreed a lot, a lot, we've never been disagreeable, and we've always kept it professional, and that's what makes our board job unique. And I'm happy to have served with both of you. I wish you both good health and prosperity moving forward for you and your families. Merry Christmas to all and Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Mr. Bono?
Well, I share all the sentiments of Dennis and Lou's and Cedric. Yeah, Cedric. Not all of Cedric, but a little bit of Cedric. Seriously, to the AFJR OCC cadets, thank you for all that you do. You're an inspiration to many, and it's a blessing to, to see what you guys have accomplished thus far. And I can't wait to continue to see the growth in all that you guys do and continue to do. Very proud, and I agree 100%. This is why we sit up here on this board, is for actions like what you guys are doing. You know, I'm a firm believer of giving back, and you showcased it to the fullest, and I'm just so proud of you guys. So, thank you for that, especially this time of the year, when this is what it's all about, the holiday and Christmas season. I'd like to let Ms. Santos know that your, your voice is heard. And I'll look into it. I'll get with other board members to discuss what we can legally discuss with you, if, if that is the case. And I'd just like to take a second to, you know, give my sentiments to your daughter. Okay? Growing up as a redhead freckled kid in the early or late 80s and early 90s, we'd have these hid policies that we have today. So, you, you know, you kind of get a sense of a thick skin, if you will. And I have some teachers over, or ex-teachers over there that can vouch for me. You know, it wasn't easy growing up red-haired and freckles. You know, you're, you're not, you're not, you know, the popular kid on the block, okay? But you take the punches as they come, right? And I'm not saying that they're right, right? I'm not saying it should be accepted. But what it does, what it did for me, it thickened my skin, right? And it showed me, and it gave me the courage to see that actions sometimes speak louder than words. Words are cheap, but it's what you do in life that's going to make you a better person. So, I apologize for the child or the children or anyone that was, you know, mean to you, right? It happens. It's part of life. It's, it's the cruel reality of, of the world we live in. Sometimes it happens. But you know what? If it's anything that you're going to learn from this, is that it's okay. There's a tomorrow. Like Dennis said earlier, you know, cherish every moment that we have, because you never know what tomorrow's going to bring, okay? So, from, you know, my experience of being bullied and all, it's not easy. But you know what? It makes us a better person at the end of the day. All right? So, again, we'll, we'll look into that and see what we can do for you. I'd like to also extend my sentiments to, and congratulations to Principal Newton. Principal Newton, you have a tough task at hand, and I just wish you the professionalism and the courage to, to dig deep into that program and to do your best to make those kids, you know, to guide them on the right path, showing them how to be good students and productive citizens in life. And R O T C, you know, they're a prime example of what it's supposed to be like, in, in my opinion. You know, giving back and just being good citizens. I'd like to also thank John Sabrana for all the awesome conversations that we've had over my two years on this board. You have been a mentor, and you have always told it like, like it is, whether I agreed or didn't agree. You know, you, you always told it like it is, and I respect you for that. And I appreciate all the time and effort that you put in to Vineland Public Schools District. And it's proof, it's evident of all the hard work and dedication you gave to this district. So, thank you. And last, Madam President, Kim Cottis Patti. Those morning conversations, those coffee breaks over the phone, whatever it was, anytime I had any kind of question, I knew that I could count on you to answer. It was a pleasure to serve on this board with you for my short time, a decade on this board. You know, I, I missed eight years of that decade that you were on, or plus years. But I could only imagine how much more advanced I would have been if I would have served longer with you. You will be missed, and like I said, I appreciate those conversations and where your heart is. Your heart is for the, the students, and that's what it's all about. So, in closing, thank you to both of you again for all your years of service on this board. And then, finally, Merry Christmas to all, and all Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays to everyone. Thank you. Have a good night.
Mrs. Perez?
Thank you, Mrs. Cottis Patti. Very briefly, because we're just going to, I'm going to echo what everyone has said, but to the AFJR O T C, kudos, bravo, commendable, amazing. I, I could not be more proud sitting up here. You guys were absolute, from the, from the flag salute all the way to the awards, and just watching your enthusiasm. What I watched most was how you encouraged each other, how you stood for each other, how you clapped for each other, how you just were there for each other. You have each other's backs, and it's amazing to see in, in our world today. So, thank you. Thank you for inspiring us to do even better than what we're doing, and sometimes that's not even a whole heck of a lot. But thank you so much for showing up, for being here, for sitting here, for being respectful, and for being encouraging. We appreciate you. We applaud you, because you guys are absolutely amazing, absolutely amazing. To the Select Choir, coming from someone who cannot carry a tune in a bucket, I swear to you, I cannot. Ms. Vasquez can attest to that. I am, but I know good when I hear good. And that National Anthem was absolutely amazing. It was amazing. It brought tears to my eyes. So, I, I know that they're not here, but they're going to be able to hear this. Just keep doing what you're doing. They were amazing as well. So, we were very proud of that. To Mr. Sabrana, I think you were my first, the first board member that called me when I was elected, and you gave me a little background, and you I was elected, and you gave me a little background, and you introduced yourself. We knew the names of each other, but we had never, I don't think, ever met in person. We have since then become closer, and it has been a privilege to work with you. You brought a lot of background to the board that I didn't have. I didn't graduate from Vineland High. I've been here forty-three years and still consider sometimes an outsider, so. But at the end of the day, you've brought in a lot of background for me, and that helped a lot. To Kim Cottis Patti, I'm not going to look at you, because if I look at you, it's going to go south real quick. When I thought of running and prayed about it, you were the person I reached out to to say, do you think this would be a good fit, and can I do this? You were amazingly encouraging, and you offered yourself as any kind of questions that I may have, any kind of guidance that I might need. And you have continued to do that for my first year on the board, and I have to tell you, I am so glad that you were the president of the board during my tenure here so far. It has been an amazing, amazing thing to watch. You have to make some very, very tough decisions, your time commitment. Chief Cottis Patti, I don't know how you gave her up that much, but I'll tell you right now, she's amazing. She was amazing, and we appreciate it. We appreciate your time and your commitment, your love for this community, your love for the students, and it has been a wonderful thing. I do want to say thank goodness Mrs. Vasquez was voted on, because if not, I would be the only female board member other than our solicitor sitting up here. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, and a happy, happy New Year. Be safe, everyone.
Mr. Sobrana.
Boy, this is really great. It's like going to a eulogy for yourself, but way cooler because you're still alive and you get to enjoy it all. Thank you, everyone, for all those kind words. You know, I never get enough of that. And thank you to Mrs. Leroux and the Select Choir. I love hearing them, and I'd like to hear them at every board meeting, to tell you the truth. And to our AF Air Force ROTC cadets, I was there when the first group was brought into Vineland High School. And let me tell you my perspective on what you are doing now and what's been done over the years. Almost immediately, by your professionalism and discipline and conduct in the school, you were improving the entire school climate. Small group, big rewards. And I was so impressed with that, and I thought, this is a program that we have to cherish and nourish and bring along. And you've done it through hard work, and your success is no surprise, and I hope that it continues for a long, long time. Tonight, I reached the end of a long road that began sixty years ago when I walked down that hall with the first group of students that were going to Landis Junior High School, which is what this building became when the new, the new high school opened on Cheston Avenue. When I walked into this auditorium, it was the biggest room I had ever seen in my hometown at that time, nineteen sixty-four. I guess I'm dating myself, but I was in awe of it then, and I am now, because of the design, the history, and all the things that you see in here. Not only that, you can actually feel the thousands of students that have been here all the way back to nineteen twenty-eight, I think, is when it was opened. Tonight's the end of a decade of service for me on this board, and it was almost a win when there was a one-year seat open the year I retired in 2015. And I ran because I still had some work to do with the communications program, integrating that with the broadcast TV and communications program at the high school. There was still a disconnect there because we had evolved into a semi-professional field services, you know, service group for the city and for the school district, and we had gotten a little bit away from students doing most of the work. We had high school students, we had college students, and we had some interns that were actually professionals working, and it was working really well, but that's not what my vision was when we started. So, and at the time, I didn't have any intent to get a career in politics. I had no appetite for that. I didn't dream of higher office, and I just wanted to see the program brought to completion, which was the integration of the two parts of it. I also thought, sort of arrogantly, that I was perhaps the best qualified person to ever, you know, seek a seat on this board. After all, for sixteen years prior to that, I had been directing the TV broadcasts of this board to the community on television before YouTube, and I saw and heard every word spoken by every board member and most administrators. Some of it was brilliant, inspired, encouraging, some of it, not so much. However, by the end of my first year, I was beginning to realize the truth in the Dunning-Kruger social science axiom, you don't know what you don't know. I had plenty of time to learn, though. Thanks to the support of the administration and all my colleagues here now, especially Mr. English, we had a state-of-the-art TV vehicle, and we were able to produce professional quality content. And now we have a full class of interested, exciting students and two people, Gia Missouri, who took over most of my job, and Doug Diola, most of the field services part of it, continuing in our communications program with enthusiasm and commitment. Of course, the support of Mr. Yano and his team have moved the program along as quickly as possible under the circumstances, which was, first of all, COVID, which just ground everything to a halt because of all the problems with the supply chain, and the entire world aware. It turned, education turned the whole world upside down. And before you know it, six years had crawled by. But fortunately, we hung in there, and especially the administration, who was patient with my frustration and all the delays that were totally unavoidable. Of course, working on the TV program was not my only interest. It was, however, the most difficult, but the most rewarding time in my long career. And whenever the students in that field services program did outstanding work, my pride had no limit. I know the joy that can be gained from the classroom, although I was spared the greater challenges. But as a board member, whatever the issue on the table, I always voted my conscience, mindful of its impact on our students, their families, the staff, the administration, and the taxpayers. I always sought consensus, and wherever possible, and compromise when it made a difference. Sure, we disagreed a lot, Mr. Holmes and I especially, but it always was professional. It was always based on the issues and not on personalities. I never voted while thinking in terms of the next election or the next higher office because I had no strong appetite for one, and I didn't care at all about the other. In particular, my partnership with Mrs. Cottis Patti over the years has been one of the most rewarding aspects of this job, especially the last few years. Thanks to her tireless efforts, and I mean totally tireless, I am proud to say that we have strongly improved safety in our schools with the presence of our school resource officers and new high-resolution video monitoring that goes back a couple of decades. Kim and I have also encouraged our district's leadership to hire the best available new staff members and create a clear path for our hometown talent to learn, grow, and acquire greater skills so they can rise to the highest possible level of responsibility. In particular, I am very excited about our new district VINE program, which is Vineland Inspires New Educators. Did I get that right? Okay. I attended the first session of that about two or three weeks ago, and I was really blown away. There was a lot of excitement in the room, and I think this is a program that is going to show great results over time. And especially in showing our staff that you can get here from here, because that's the greatest thing, is to create incentive for them, knowing that if they learn and grow, and they want to aspire beyond the classroom or beyond a particular office, that they can do it. In addition, the serving as Vice President this year, I had the honor of being Chair of the Personnel and Policy Committee. Mr. Yano and his team were very supportive of our committee's desire to hire the best qualified candidates and gave every consideration to those with years of classroom experience and also in our offices. Because every level of government in this country is dealing with the problems of aging infrastructure, I share the concern at the magnitude of repair and replacement VPS faces in the next decade. But I'm also encouraged that with Mr. Farinaccio and his team, Mr. Mustarello and the finance folks, and Mr. Bermuda's helping to pull it all together from Mr. Yano and the board, that we will make careful, prudent fiscal decisions to provide safe, appropriate facilities for all of our students. I've enjoyed working with everyone here, and I wish all of you, Mr. Fiocchi, Mr. Santiago, and Mrs. Vasquez, the energy, passion, and the wisdom to do what is right for all of our students. I thank everyone who has supported me these past ten years, especially my wife Carla, who's here tonight, who amazes and humbles me every day to keep going despite her physical challenges. I'm also grateful for my friends, some of them since kindergarten, and all the people I have met and become friends with since nineteen ninety-five. Also want to say a special thank you to Mr. Nick Asalta, who led the vision to encourage the board to create the position I developed from almost a blank sheet of paper in nineteen ninety-four. We both worked in newspaper publishing together for many years, but it was Nick who recognized that the brand-new internet was eventually going to make everyone with a cellphone a content producer, and it wasn't always going to be good for everyone. It truly is the wild west of information out there, and it is more imperative than ever that we share our story as far and wide and as accurately as possible to inspire public trust in what we do through every media platform and publication that's available. At last month's meeting, Gia said the kindest thing almost anyone has ever said to me in this building. She said, "I can't imagine this place without you here." Well, I can't imagine my life without VPS, and I told Mr. Yano today that I was available for any volunteer duty or historical perspective on any issue. Meanwhile, I have lots of other stuff to do, especially touring our great country with Carla and our almost brand-new motorhome. I want to thank everyone again from the bottom of my heart, wish you well in the future, and say goodbye.
Just a few announcements. Again, thank you to our Air Force Junior ROTC, leading the flag salute, being here, representing every meeting, and also helping to improve the climate and culture of our high school. Outstanding students has been said and noted multiple times. They are a wonderful group to deal with, and we look forward to supporting them during their inspection that's coming up soon at the end of the month. December's a very busy month. VHS X Factor tomorrow night, CPAC Friday, Pillar Middle School Concert on the ninth, Memorial Schools Concert on the eleventh, the Vocal Concert on the sixteenth, the Wallace Winter Concert on the seventeenth, and the Band and Strings Concert on the eighteenth. That's just a couple. So December is busy, but it's an amazing time because our students are in the spotlight, shining, doing some amazing performances, led by our wonderful teaching staff. A special thank you to the Rotary Club of Vineland for hosting their annual holiday party for our K-two Special Education students, this Moore and At Rossi School. It's always a wonderful way to start the holiday season. And a special thank you to Terry Godlewski and the Special Education Team, everyone who helped out to put on an amazing and awesome event. It's heartwarming to see our students receive gifts and see Santa and sing songs and hear music in that set in At Rossi Elementary School. It's a beautiful day. We want to wish everyone a safe and wonderful holiday season. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. Can you believe it's already here? It's amazing and also quite stressful, because if you haven't started shopping, you better get going. Special recognition to the Barufi Brothers for making a $250 donation to Pillar Middle School's Student Tech Team to buy T-shirts. The Student Tech Team is a group of students who will be conducting different tasks at the middle school in partnership with our Verizon partnership, where they provide Chromebooks and instructional coaches for our students. So thank you to the Barufi Brothers for providing that donation for our students. We have two, you know, icons of Vineland, right, tonight at their last meeting, and there's so many wonderful things that have been said already this evening. I don't want to repeat them, but I do want to say, we definitely haven't agreed on a lot of things, but we definitely have agreed on the important stuff, right? Safety and security, bringing in the best programs for our students, hiring highly-qualified administrators. Mr. Sobrana was a core member of our policy and personnel team, and he would always ask us, you know, who, you know, is the best person for the job, and looking internally, trying to find folks, you know, that we can promote. And if you see that table over there, you see a lot of internal promotions who moved up and have been quite successful. So I want to thank Mr. Sobrana for his dedication to the program and also keeping communications and how we speak about our district, you know, at the forefront. You know, if we're not doing a good job celebrating who we are, sometimes folks listen to all of the negativity, and we have to do a better job of that. So I thank him, and also for the offer of helping to be a part of our communications kind of plan and our team as we move forward. To President Cottis Patti, it's just been amazing, the work that we've done together, that we've accomplished, the, you know, if you think back to, this is my fifth year, and those five years have been with, you know, either led by or supported by President Cottis Patti and the rest of our board, you know, we have done quite a bit. And it's not me or you or someone individually, it's the collective. It's the support from this team, you know, led by someone like Scott English and then Megan Spinelli and now Kim Cottis Patti. We can do great things when we work together, when we have the focus on our students, you know, our most precious resource. When we make decisions with their best interests in mind, you know, we can't make a wrong move. And our committed and dedicated and super supportive board members are going to continue to do great work. So thank you, President Cottis Patti, and Vice President, Mr. Sobrana, for helping to lay that groundwork as we kick off in January for what will be an exciting time for Vineland Public Schools. Thank you so much.
First, I'd like to echo the sentiments of all of my board members on how great our district is. I am the last speaker, and I promise not to be too long. I will not be as long as Mr. Rivera always is, so I'm going to keep it down a little bit. To our Junior ROTC for their color guard who came in for our Vineland High School Select Choir for the beautiful holiday mini-concert, and to Mr. Okafor, I am so impressed by you, and I just see great things happening. So I'm so grateful that I was able to have the first part of your tenure as senior class president, and I'm going to try to sneak into graduation so I can hear that speech come. So good luck to you in whatever you do. I am so incredibly proud of these cadets out here, and I'm especially proud of our Cadet Conrad and Gonzalez, who were presented this evening with the humanitarian awards. I'm not sure if everyone realizes, but a few years ago, this program was on the edge of becoming extinct in our district. Now we're thriving. We went from fifty-seven cadets in 2009 to one-hundred-and-forty-seven today with a As you heard, we have, they have twelve-hundred-and-sixteen hours of community service. We have two cadets who have passed the courses from ground school training and are ready to begin the next step towards a private pilot's license. I think that's pretty good. There are just too many great things that they're doing and have accomplished that we would be here for longer than I think you guys want me to speak. But there is something, there's a big thank you that must go out to Mrs. Mueller, who has stood by this group and worked so hard, has given endless time, effort, and dedication to our cadets and the program, and I think she deserves a round of applause. And board members, if you want to see something, please come out to that inspection on December eighteenth. It is something to see and be a part of. Moving on from that, my tenure on the Vineland Board of Education is coming to an end, and I am extremely thankful to my family who understood and has supported me over the ten years. years. I love you dearly. Thanks for being there. While serving on the board officially for nine years, the one year I thought I was off, I was asked to help with the dedication of Dominic Pillar Middle School, which was an extreme honor and I would like to thank the Pillar family for including me. For those of you in the public who come to the podium, thank you. It does take a lot to get up there and say what you need to say. You might not always hear what you wanna hear, but we are listening. Understand that just because we cannot have a dialogue with you here at this meeting, we are listening and we do follow up with the administration to make sure your thoughts are being administered too. I'm not sure if the public really understands the endless hours of meetings, phone calls, texting and events that go along with being a school board member. The board, while being elected, does this all on a volunteer basis? It does not get, we do not get paid for it, but that's despite popular belief. Ms. Grace.
It has been a pleasure to work with you over the past two years as board solicitor. You have been a bright spot that we normally don't get. You always have been available for any member of the board at any time to discuss anything. Board members, as well as administration, may or may not have agreed with you, but you always researched and had backup and always had the board and our district's back. I think this is the first time I ever have sat on the board in all these years that we've had someone actually stick up for us in public. Thank you and I appreciate you more than you know. I hope the board realizes just how important you and your firm are to them and renew your contract come spring. Mr. Yano and Central Administration, I feel we've had a good working relationship. We've not always agreed as we've stated, but we've always worked through things and we've gotten things done that we needed to get done. So, I appreciate that. I believe communication is a big part of the environment and I believe you guys need to communicate together as a board, but thank you all for your hard work because this couldn't get done without you. Vineland Public Schools, second to none. As Mr. Rivera has stated numerous times, we are the best and we are. To our teachers and staff who work hard and probably do not get the recognition that they probably deserve, thank you for everything that you do. Mrs. DiMarci, Mrs. Rivera, your CTE team, you have worked tirelessly to bring our CTE programs to the forefront. Many are thriving. Just looking at how our Future Farmers of America, auto mechanics, construction trades have grown, and that's just to name a few of our classes, we're outgrowing the space and that's not a bad thing. CC Tech has nothing on us.
Gia, thank you for always having my back when I called and needed something. Thanks for always having that speech when I needed it, so thank you. Cole, our deaf therapy dog, has become a national celebrity and should be Vineland Public Schools Ambassador of Goodwill. Mr. Hannah and Cole, thank you for not only helping the children in the district, but bringing a great spotlight for Vineland. Mrs. Quinn, I didn't get a chance to thank you at last year's graduation because the kind of a storm took over for us, but you alongside of Mr. Adams and all the APs at the high school brought everything together and got us through when we needed it, so thank you very much. Finally, to the board. We've done a lot of great things together and should be proud of what we've accomplished. Always stay true to yourself and the reason you ran for the board. Don't be afraid to place a vote and never base your vote on being reelected. Reach out to me or any former board member anytime if you need to brainstorm. There are times I bounced ideas off of Mr. English, the late Mr. Alrich, Mayor Finucci, my husband, who wasn't a board member, but he has so much experience in a lot of different things, I bounced things off of him. Sometimes, all you need is an independent ear and I thank them for hearing me out. I'm proud of the work we've done with our CTE classes, our dual credits, parental rights policies and finally, after many years of fighting, we finally have armed guards. I remember sitting with Mr. English and Mr. Alrich fighting for this and now thanks to this administration, we have them. I hope you as a board, along with a superintendent and BA, find the money necessary to keep and increase the guards in the schools for the protection and safety of our students and staff. Board members, go out and get into the schools. Go see what our great students are accomplishing. I believe with Mr. Rivera, Mr. Bono, Ms. Perez, Mr. Silva in leadership roles, I believe the board is in good hands and will continue to move forward with many great things to come. Ms. Vasquez and Mr. Santiago, I wish you well. I believe you two will be a great fit on this board and contribute in many ways that may be lacking. Mr. Sabrana, we've served almost our entire time together on the board. We've had good times and I've enjoyed having you sitting here next to me. I wish you well and I hope you can now go enjoy some downtime with your wife. Finally, thank you to everyone who has had confidence and faith in me during my tenure on the board. I am extremely humbled and blessed to have had the opportunity to have served this district. I would like to wish everyone a very merry and blessed Christmas, a happy Hanukkah and a happy and safe New Year. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
All in favor?